Okay, now we do have...
Four minutes. We're technically, we're 6:30, which means we told you to go for about something that can last four minutes. We could, we could. We're going to get started.
Yeah, so elementary, I believe, is all of it. Mr. Temple, I come up. Okay, we're going to give it over to the elementary principal first, because we lose that list at 6:00. Yay! So, we're going to honor the elementary students who actually scored a perfect 600 on the SOL. And as I said, this is a huge feat because the SOLs have gone through a lot of revision in the previous six years. They've gone through an adoption cycle, they've changed what's called the depth of knowledge on test. Okay, and that's important to note, because before it was sort of a baseline content knowledge. It is not that anymore. The rigor has come up to the point where it's more in-depth knowledge, more application, creative thinking, deep thought of the content and applicability of the content. So it's not just simply reviewing facts and regurgitating what you learned in class. Now you really have to learn to apply that in a testing format. Add to that that they've added technology-enhanced items. So now you have different drop-down boxes and things you can drag and drop and all of these different technology-enhanced items that add to the layers of complexity for this test. So scoring a 600, that I'm getting around to that, is a really huge deal. That's awesome, because it takes a lot of mastery of that knowledge to get to that point. So, we're so excited that we do have so many here, that's awesome, for the perfect 600. So, Mr. Temple? I'm gonna take it.
Boys and girls, I'm gonna call your name, I'm gonna hand you your certificate, and you'll just kind of line up right here, so that we can get a picture one more time, okay? Mason Palmer. 600, on the Virginia Studies, 3rd grade math class. Summer Shackleford. 600, 4th grade reading. Faith Beck. 600, 4th grade reading. Julieta Pace. 600, 4th grade reading. Shelby Glenn. 600, Virginia Studies. David Look. 600, Virginia Studies. William Vanery. 600, Virginia Studies. Derek Zook. 600, Virginia Studies. Daniel Garcia. 600, Virginia Studies. Ward Cash the 4th. 600, 5th grade reading. Isaac Shulon. 600, 5th grade reading. Kevin Beach. 600, 5th grade reading. Ward Cash the 4th. 5th grade, science. Nathan Jeno. 600, 5th grade, science. Jacob Johnson. 600, 5th grade, science. Samuel Purdue. 600, 5th grade, science. Isaac Shulon. 600, 5th grade, science. Samuel Vanery. 600, 6th grade, reading. Isaiah Hough. 600, 7th grade, civics. Congratulations, guys, thank you for working hard.
Can we have some commit light and miss the names? Can we look through the names?
David Look. 600, Virginia Studies.
Excited? We're getting ready.
Maybe get two rows and you can hold it.
Alright, let's crunch in like we love each other, like we're getting... Come in here, let's get, let's see, you're pretty tall. Alright, you're working for yours. Okay? There we go, let's see, then. Here we go, how's that? Way to go, you guys. Thank you so much. Yay, wow! Thank you so much, wow, that's impressive. Okay, so now I'm going to give to everybody, Principal Carol Ellis from the high school. She was there, but struggling with the perfect 600 score. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're gonna recognize students at the high school who are the perfect 600 on their spring 2017 SOL. And recognize the fall 2017 at a previous school meeting last year. So this is just for the spring. No easy feat, this test is challenging. So, you know, many of our students pass them, but to get a perfect score says a lot about these students, so we want to recognize them today. So first off, we have Rachel Wackwards, who received a perfect score on her writing SOL. We have Cara Heverly, who also received a perfect score on her writing SOL. Drake Lynn, who received a perfect score on his writing SOL. Madison Wells, who received a perfect score on her writing SOL. Virginia Wyatt, also received a perfect score on her writing SOL. I believe she's out in the gym getting ready for volleyball games. We have Lauren Petty, received a perfect score on the Algebra II SOL. Her little brother would not let her stand alone. Alex Petty, received a perfect score on his Geometry SOL. I want to recognize Drake Lynn again, I know he's not with us tonight, but he received a perfect SOL, not only on his writing, but also on his Virginia and US History SOL. The only one, right? Personal Finance. He was the only student that scored a perfect score on the Economics, Personal Finance exam. We have Daniel Dava Luca. Did I say that correctly, Daniel? He received a perfect score on his Geo, Geography, and Geometry SOL. Donovan Zook, received a perfect score on his World History I SOL. And Lauren Petty again, with her World History I SOL. We also have two teachers that I want to recognize tonight. They, their students earned, and I will say earned, because you work for this, but every one of their students earned a 100% pass grade. So, I'm sorry, all of their students passed the SOL, so the teacher earned a 100% pass rate, which again, is no small feat. I mean, you work hard with your students, and you see a lot of growth, that you put your heart and soul in it, but these two teachers, 100% pass rate. We have Sally Shackleford, for grade 8 math. And joining us is Michael Sheffield, with US Virginia History 100. Everybody stay up here for a picture. You got us all? Well done, everybody.
Congratulations, parents of good people. Great work, teaching great work. We appreciate, we appreciate you coming out. I know it's just feel, um, bound to hang out. You're certainly welcome to hang out during the rest of the meeting, but, uh, you know, if there's things that you want to do or need to do, it's a great volleyball game. But, uh, welcome to leave at the... We, by the way, if somebody came in late and missed the presentation...
She did that, she was safe there.
Thank you all, we're having a really nice... We're working on our communication, so, time, choose your program. Thanks for coming.
Hey, big guy.
Are you sure I'll cook this time? That was a great turn on. You know, I was thinking, one year, we had a few students that had 600 on the SOL. And I told the board that the surprise we gave me was that we were gonna take it as well. And you should see the panic. I was totally panicked. We have 600, so we're going to... Alright, so, uh, let's proceed. Uh, we had 5.3.
5.3, okay.
Good evening.
So we rolled, we're family now. Okay, so 5.3, I'm really excited about this. I am going to introduce one of our, our CPS parents, Mrs. Angelia Wood, to come to the stage, as well as Mrs. Henry Wood, to give a presentation that they... Please tell me my...
Good evening, Mr. Perry, I'm a school board member, and this is Henry. This time, thank you for inviting us today. My name is Henry Wood, I'm from Hawthorne, McLeod. I'm still in Hawthorne District, I go to school, here at the high school. Um, I'm here this evening because I'm dyslexic. Uh, perhaps the most interesting part of my story is I didn't understand that I was dyslexic until I was 14 years old. I spent the first eight years of my school experience in wondering why school in general and language in particular was so hard for me. But it seemed that no matter how hard I tried, and how much my family tried to help me, it didn't seem to be any easier. Uh, I honestly began to wonder what I was doing wrong. Luckily, my family did not give up, searching for answers, and we finally found them in the winter of my 8th grade year. I am dyslexic, which just means that I need to learn in a different way. I am now doing just that, my whole world has changed. I am now going to turn over the technical part of this presentation to my mom. But I want, I want you to know that I would do anything to help any of the children in their families.
Good evening, everyone, am I close enough? Can you hear me? Um, my name is Angela Wood, and as Henry mentioned, I am his mom. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. To give you a very brief background, our family has a long history of being concerned about Henry's reading abilities. In elementary school, we were seeing red flags. At home, but they didn't seem to be overly concerning to his teachers. In 2012, we privately tested Henry for reading disability at the Clugan Center at UVA. Based on that information, we continued to work with Henry at home and with the school to try to address his reading weaknesses. But he continued to make less than expected improvements. Desperate to find more information, and fearing that Henry would begin high school still not reading independently. We privately tested Henry again in January of 2016 with a neuropsychologist who specializes in dyslexia. We finally figured out the puzzle. Henry is dyslexic, and he requires a multi-sensory, explicit, sequential reading program that is designed to teach a dyslexic person how to read. Henry has been receiving private remediation with a certified reading academic therapist for the past year and a half, and he is finally making true progress. While we are a long way from being dyslexia experts, our family has learned a lot in the past two years, and we have been connected to some of the most amazing resources in the state of Virginia, and even nationally. Dyslexia is a very dynamic topic today in the education community, and we think our county has a very exciting opportunity to help more students become proficient readers. Our personal goal is to help our school system forge length to these amazing resources and to provide a support for our families, so they don't have to struggle for many years searching for answers and solutions. So what exactly is dyslexia? I discovered that it is actually almost entirely different than what I thought. I am including the International Dyslexia Association's formal definition here for your review, but instead of reading this version, I really want to focus on translating it to something a little more relatable. Dyslexia is an unexpected difficulty learning to read. It is unexpected, because otherwise, the read, the individual appears to have intelligence, motivation, and education to be a better reader. There's a reason "unexpected" is written in all capital letters. It represents the cornerstone of the puzzle that seems so difficult to solve. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability, one type of a specific learning disability. Specific learning disabilities are not overall intellectual impairments that impact general learning and daily functioning. Students with a specific learning disability experience a significant difficulty in one academic area, while coping well or even excelling in other academic, artistic, or athletic areas. It is not a visual problem. Neither the eyes nor the brain are flipping letters, like many of us might still believe. Instead, it is a neurobiological difference in the brain. And in just a few more slides, I have a visual to share that demonstrates this fascinating process. It is particularly characterized by difficulty decoding letter sounds with N-words and building a large bank of easily recognized words. It's not the result of brain damage, and reading skills are not correlated to IQ with dyslexics. This graphic portrays the scientific evidence resulting from a study supporting this very unexpected nature of dyslexia. The left panel shows how IQ and reading track together in strong readers, while the right panel shows how IQ and reading are not coupled in dyslexic readers. In other words, IQ and reading go their separate ways. So a dyslexic person can have a very high IQ, and yet read at a much lower level. Reading is not natural. We know that people are born to speak. Humans are genetically and neurologically hardwired to communicate verbally, but they are not born to read. Reading must be taught and learned through conscious effort. So here's this fascinating slide that shows the biological difference in the way dyslexic brain processes, in the way the dyslexic brain processes written language. Doctors Sally and Bennett Shaywitz, co-founders and still today co-directors of the Yale Center for Dyslexia and Creativity, began pioneering research as far back as the 1970s to try to unlock the mystery about why some students struggle in school. Finding very little available scientific evidence, they particularly focused their studies on using functional MRI, and the results actually made this hidden disability visible and tangible. Imaging of strong readers helped identify the three neural systems for reading, which is represented by that image on the left. On the other hand, imaging of dyslexic readers revealed an overactivation of the frontal area and a significant underactivation of the two back areas, which happened to be the areas responsible for word form and word analysis. It's interesting to point out also that they believe there is a strong upside to dyslexia, and that dyslexics tend to be creative and very out-of-the-box thinkers. The very characteristics that can mask the fact that a child is having a tough time reading. Hence the name, the Yale Center for Dyslexia and Creativity. When we get back to the resources page, I have included a reference to Dr. Sally's book titled "Overcoming Dyslexia", which is widely considered one of the very best resources we have today. Estimates vary, but suggest as many as 15 to 20% of the population as a whole have some symptoms of dyslexia. That is not a small number, 1 in 5 people. It occurs in people of all backgrounds, across all races, ethnicities, intellectual and socionomic levels. And it occurs in all written language, and it has a tendency to run in families. This chart aims to highlight not only some of the difficulties or red flags that might suggest dyslexia, but also to identify some of the many strengths that make dyslexics special and gifted. Without understanding the presence of both, we risk not identifying the condition. We can find many examples of their genius. Steve Jobs, Albert Einstein, Steven Spielberg, Alexander Graham Bell, and the list goes on and on and on. Their genius didn't occur in spite of dyslexia, but rather probably because of it. Scientifically proven structured literacy remediation, with its focus on developing decoding skills, is well-established to help dyslexics learn to read a different way than traditional reading methods. Most effective programs are based on Orton-Gillingham methodology, which was actually developed in the early 20th century, but is still the foundation that is effective today. Applying these overarching principles to these specific elements is the key to teaching dyslexics how to read. And we are also finding that they are effective instruction strategies for all readers. We have a call to action. Reading effectively is a cornerstone to all learning, and should be considered one of the most very basic skills we develop in all of our students. We have an abundance of high-quality scientific knowledge to help guide us in implementing the change that is necessary to help these struggling readers. We have a tremendous opportunity now to use this knowledge to make a difference and empower the lives of these students. The impact of not remediating dyslexia is even more tremendous. It stretches far wider than the printed words of reading, spelling, and writing, to all education areas, to self-confidence, to behavior, in short, to life in general. One way or another, it changes lives, but it is up to us to help determine how those lives are changed. To quote one of my heroes, Sally Shaywitz, "We don't have a knowledge gap, but we need to close the action gap." We believe we need to address the following objectives. Promote awareness within our school system and community about dyslexia in order to identify the individuals who can benefit from the evidence-based instruction. Provide proper training opportunities for our instructions to be able to implement and teach structured literacy programs. Aim to provide this evidence-based instruction as early as possible in students' academic career, because delays are much more difficult and costly to implement. And to provide a support structure for both students and families to share resources and help them know they are not alone. In closing, I am including several especially wonderful resource links. BDOE happens to be very focused on this issue and in providing support to school districts. 2016 Virginia legislation now requires BDOE to have mandatory dyslexia training for initial licensure or renewal licensure of all teachers. But this module that they're offering does not require a key to access, and I would encourage everyone to take the time to review the short presentation, because it provides such a great overview. I've also included a TED Talk video link here, that's very easy and engaging to watch, and I read something almost every single day that Decoding Dyslexia: Virginia posts on their Facebook page. And they happen to be part of a grassroots parent advocacy group that basically has sparked the land, the changing landscape that we are seeing today. Thank you again so much for having us here this evening. I want to extend a special thank you to Mrs. Grimsley and to Mrs. Johnson for embracing and supporting this very important issue, and for inviting us to be here to share with you. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us. Our family is extremely committed to helping in any way that we can.
I'm saying that the brochures that Angela's put together as a part of a parental outreach initiative, as you've just heard, this is so amazing, because it's really taught us at the school district a lot about our own procedures, and how we handle accommodations, and how these issues, like you said, can be so masked by our own processes we already have in place. Because of the high IQ and high success rate of these students, it doesn't always correlate to what we, our procedures see. And this was a great example of a great parent advocate who stood up and said, "No, I'm telling you, here it is", and then showed us how, and she put together these wonderful resources for us, and we need to share them, because we're just so appreciative of what you've done. And Henry, amazing, I want to share. Um, we have printed your brochures, actually. So we do have them for you, we'll be taking about some here, too.
So, yeah, that was my question. So I saw the brochure, it's truffled, that's what you have?
Yes.
So how do we distribute those things?
We are going to put them at each school to make sure they're available. We're going to give Angela a box, and then we can also, because she has offered to host this parent support group in whatever form that takes. Now, as we raise awareness this year, already we have teachers being trained. Mrs. Johnson has signed up several teachers already to make sure they go to the Orton-Gillingham training that...
I'm so excited.
...train, ready to go. We also have begun a very comprehensive needs assessment of our own reading programs, and we have some teacher leaders helping us do that. They were part of the teacher leader team for a reading assessment, to see the way things are, the inventory of how our programs are working, what it looks like in every grade level, and what accommodations are in place for not just our tiered students and the needs of struggling readers, but what about our dyslexic students, who we may be missing on our traditional processes. So we're so thankful. So we're so thankful you want us to do all this.
Thank you for embracing it.
Yes.
Henry, your parents are Sherlock and Holmes, solving mysteries.
They are. They're amazing.
That's great.
Any questions?
Great calling and great information. I hope we can help other students. If you look, if you were to look, I grew up in Foxer County, looking at my permanent file. Since when I was in elementary school, I was likely a non-reader. And that's basically, that was the end of the story. That was it for me. I was a non-reader.
That was probably it for most of us.
That was it. So a great job tagging that, figuring it out, tagging it, and then trying to broadcast.
I think it was a blessing for us to, I mean, I think dyslexia is a blessing to many things. I think especially for us because I think we just were able to connect that. It's really, I mean, cutting edge, people on the line, people on Capitol Hill, people in Richmond that are really out there. Really poorly grounded, but especially a small district like us, we don't have all of those resources. And now we have the ability to keep things happening.
If the number sure is great, as you, the stats say, I wonder, you know, how many are struggling and we just got them.
Well, I think that brings awareness to, I'm confident that Shannon and the staff can take this and that Angela's help run. Running close speed ahead, great information, makes a difference.
Well, please let us know if you have questions or if there's anything in particular we're going to keep moving forward as this young group sort of evolves, whatever that becomes. And is available to help support students, whether it's helping them learn technologies, use those, and help them in their educational circumstances. Just to let them know that you're not alone then. It just means you learn differently.
Do you need assistance in putting this booth together or a place to meet or any of that kind of thing?
You know, I don't really know yet where we're headed.
Well, let's put it this way, you know, that works both ways. You can ask us.
I mean, I'm happy to, I don't know if we're a little premature to set a particular time yet. I'm happy to have a Monday meeting, a quarterly meeting, sit down at the chairs. I know people come for three years and then all of a sudden one person comes and we help them. That's great. I don't have any pre-set ideas about what it should be or where it's headed. Just plan to sort of evolve with it as we see the need. Mostly, we just, we invested so much time in trying to figure out what it was and what to do once we were there. And it's so wonderful to feel like you're coming into an art and then to be able to do it.
Cool. Good information. Thank you.
Moving on to 5.4, another exciting topic. I have Jane Whitfield here to share a presentation with you about the Rapp Trails project.
My favorite topic of late. So thanks for having me. Many of you might have already heard about this project, but in case you haven't, I'll give a real quick overview. And then I have a brief presentation and I'd like to talk a minute about the resolution, which is an action item for you later. Two years ago, I had our grandchildren were visiting us here. We have five acres in Amosville on Battle Mountain Road. And we had really nowhere to take them out for a walk except for, you know, relatively in this area, small property. And it occurred to me how nice it would be to have someplace to take them out bike riding. It's really not safe on our road and walking. And I thought about all the trails that are all around us. And I thought, gosh, with our emphasis on the natural beauty of our environment, that would be something great for us. And so I embarked on this journey and found out that there had been two attempts at this previously, one about 25 years ago and one about 15 years ago. Not quite the same as what we're doing now through Rapp Trails, but in essence, community groups who wanted to have safe opportunities to bike primarily. So I'm really excited that we've gotten as far as we have. And I think a lot of people think that they didn't think it would get this far, but I think we're going to make it happen. So to the presentation. So Rapp Trails has a county-wide vision. The vision for our project is to connect the villages of Rappahannock County with a multi-use trail or a series of trails that would go from Amesville to Flint Hill to Washington to Sperryville, which would be about a 35-mile path. That's about a 30-year endeavor, right? That's a vision. Those are all over the state and all over the country. But that's the goal. But we have to start somewhere. And we're going to start with a section we're going to talk about in a second. Obviously, it's great for health and fitness. It's safe. It's not safe. I don't know if anybody's ever gone, have you ever driven on Highway 211 and actually seen people walking on the side of 211? I have. It's shocking. It's not safe.
You're on the wrong side.
Our community needs more opportunity to go out and have health and fitness. You know, people don't work in the fields like they used to. And again, there are a lot of places to safely walk and bike. It's good for our community. People can walk together. Rapp at Home is a partner, for example, and is looking forward to having walking groups. It's ageless. It's good for young people. It's good for the elderly. And because at least large sections of the trail will be ADA accessible, it's good for the disabled. It's good for everybody. And it's free. It's also good for all socioeconomic levels, which I think is something we struggle with here in Rappahannock County. Just how do we make sure that there are really quality initiatives that serve all of us? It's a place for gathering and socializing, a place for children, families, young people in the aging, as we talked about. The first section is proposed to be what we're calling the School's Connector. And that is a smaller portion of the first large section, which will be between Sperryville and Washington. So again, remember, we want to connect the whole village. We have to start somewhere. We have a six-mile plan between Sperryville and Washington. Even of those six miles, that's a several-year process. This is an expensive project. It's not an expensive project. It takes time. It takes engineering. So we have to start somewhere. We're proposing that the first section be what we're calling the School's Connector. And that would connect the high school and the elementary school, providing not only a great place for community walking and biking, but it's also great for student and teacher access and safety. Any students or teachers, parents who walk to school, I know that's not common, but you know, it could be more common, or bike to school from, for example, Sperryville and Washington eventually and those surrounding neighborhoods. Also, it supports the Commit to be Fit program, which has such been a great emphasis for the school. Will give a great, it's a one and a half miles, I think, is the connector place where students, the track team, parents after school, kids before and after school can access. And then it further enhances the school's role as an asset to the community. And I think that's really been, I've been here just three years, but that's something that I've seen as an emphasis. And I know it's an emphasis for Shannon and all of you. So people on the weekends, for example, could come and, you know, park at the schools and be able to use the trail as well as the students. So again, these pictures are hard to see. I apologize. But this is just a map of the initial six-mile route, which would start, we're calling it the Washington to Sperryville section. And it would start at highway where 522 Main Street hits 211 and then travel most of the way along Highway 211 except for one little loop that we'll talk about in a second, and then continue to Headmasters Pub. So I'm providing that. This is the School's Connector segment, which I, you know, is directly relevant for our meeting tonight. It's not all along Highway 211. You can see that for a variety of really engineering reasons, we have, what actually makes it nicer, it's one of those funny things. We have jogged the trail back behind the high school along the VDOT yard and then back up onto Rocknells Road. Would cross Rocknells Road, travel along Highway 211. And then you can see, this is called the School Connector. We're having that costed out right now. Wasn't part of our original plan. But the goal would be to go from the high school along behind the high school and then have a path that goes down on that School Connector, which connects directly to the playground and the elementary school. And then we'll probably continue to bank road and that'll be it. That'll be that section. That section costs about $1.1 million. If people are interested in what we're talking about in terms of the trail, the six-mile trail we expect will be about $4.5 million. That's completely consistent with trails all around the country and in this state. Seems like a lot, but the great news is that I've been in fundraising for 25 years and that happens to be my area of expertise. So if we go to the next slide, I can talk to you a little bit about the status. And I'm going to try to go quickly. I'm sorry if I'm taking a long time, but since I haven't been here. So one of the first things we did when this looked like it was really going to become a reality this year, which was this year, we raised $15,000 and we used some of that money to hire Boulder Engineering and develop a concept, set plan and a budget plan. They have done many trails all around us, including in Foxer County and in Gold Pepper. And we established a partnership with VDOT and with Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission and went about our way figuring out this first six miles and what that would take. That's that map that you saw. And then they really went in each half-mile section and determined what it would take in terms of spill, engineering, asphalt, bridges, everything, and did an estimate for us on how much it would cost and developed that map. So we are actually having a public meeting tomorrow night at Headmasters Pub. Please spread the news and we will be talking in more detail and we'll have that report to share with people. Fundraising is underway. The PATH Foundation is just this close to giving us $150,000. Why is that important? Because in order to get the VDOT funding, which is the holy grail of funding, we must raise $220,000 by November 1st. With PATH Foundation's $150,000 and $20,000, we've already gotten commitments from individuals. We expect to be able to do this. There are some other foundations that would like to help us. And then again, at that meeting tomorrow night, we'll be asking the general public to step up. And we have a few other individuals that are willing to help. The TAP grant is, can give you $1 million a year for two years. It's a two-year grant. We won't be asking for that much because that would be unusual for them to give that. But we will be asking for $880,000 to meet that $1.1 million goal. We're working closely with VDOT and the Triple RC. They actually send people to our meetings. We had like six people from them. They want us to get this money. They want it. They've been looking, in their own words, they've been looking for a project in Rappahannock County to fund. They haven't had one brought to them that meets the TAP grant requirements. And so they want it to happen and they've been working with me really weekly very closely. I've been working with Shannon and now working with all of you on making the School's Connector happen. It was really wonderful when some of our planning team met with Shannon and her team and we learned about the safety plan that you've been thinking about and how well this correlates to that. Not just the safety I'm talking about in the TAP grant talks about, which is, you know, safely walking from school to school, but also having an alternate way for students and staff to exit the school should there be an emergency which was blocking the front road, so at the front of the school. So right now, there's not a safe way to do that. This would be an opportunity perhaps to make that happen. And we've talked about a lot of really interesting ways that we could make that secure during the school hours and maybe open to the public on the weekends, that sort of thing. So I think it really, it's really a great opportunity to just be like a win-win for everyone. It's not a done deal. There's still a lot, I mean, we are so excited we got it this far, right? There are a lot of things that could happen. The funding, the PATH Foundation could say no. I don't think that's going to happen. They're real excited about it. John McCarthy's the chair of the board. That's in our benefit. But they could, there could be utilities. We're having the utilities looked at. We could discover that there are utility lines underneath where we need to go and the cost would be so prohibitive that we couldn't do it. So we cannot get the VDOT money. I mean, there are certainly things that could happen. But I'll tell you that everyone is excited about where we are. And I think we couldn't be doing anything better. Next steps. Tonight, one of the things that we're asking from you from the school board is to consider a support resolution. The Board of Supervisors also approved a support resolution last month. Yours is slightly different in the sense that we are asking you specifically to say that should this project be funded, you will allow the trail to be built on school property. And working with Brenda Garten and Art Goff, the superintendent and the county attorney, I'm sorry, the county administrator and the county attorney, to be really clear on exactly what documentation we need. So we may need to come back when we get the funds and get a specific easement. You know, there might be more. But in the meantime, VDOT has specified that I must have a document that says that if they give us the money, that both the county, the Board of Supervisors and the school board are not going to deny us access to the route. So that's that. Tomorrow night, we're having that community meeting. We're going to have a fundraising event. As I said, it's important at the end of September. On October 2nd, we take all of the documentation and a commitment letter for the VDOT grant to the Board of Supervisors. It's our goal to have that 20% match committed by then. We have received it, but we'd like to tell the board that we've raised commitments for that money. And then November 1st, we'll apply for the grant. And then we have to wait till March to find out if it's valid. So that's the project in a nutshell. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to add.
So we do have a resolution that's prepared for us tonight.
Where are you, when you go behind the high school like I've been in Rocknells, where are you coming from the school?
Well, eventually it will go Beckwith Lane and kind of just come on, it comes down Beckwith Lane and then comes almost all the way back up to Highway 211 and then it'll curve down along the right-hand side of the high school.
It would be to the west side of the parking lot.
Right. You think it would be right here, right? Isn't it right there?
Yeah, but behind the filtration plant.
Yes, and then behind us. That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And that will, this is all a combination of county. Another important point for folks who don't know about the project yet is that one of the beauties of it, one of the reasons we chose this route is because it's all on VDOT-owned land or county-owned land. So there are no issues with getting, including this whole section here, there are no issues with getting approvals or acquiring land from private citizens.
Yeah, that's right. Well, most of it is in that back section that we've never...
I think some of that, too, some of the very specifics about the route, you know, we're going to discover that as we get further into the project. The whole first year of the project, so it's two years of funding, the whole first year is engineering and planning and all these plans that have to get developed, and through, through that process, we may discover we have to tweak the route a little bit, just based on what we find. So it'll be a little bit of an iterative process.
A little bit, if you go north to the right of the school board, you're interfering with the field, so you have to go...
We can go to the very edge of the county property. So at, once we have it surveyed, then, you know, we can identify, we need 14 feet to make something ADA accessible. It's 10 feet wide and two feet on each side, so we need 14 feet, and we can go right up to the edge of the property. Thank you so much. Okay, so 5.5 is a whole slew of policy updates for your review. I have to present them to you from BSBA, and then you are to review them for 30 days and then take action on them at the next meeting. So a lot of it is a lot of just verbiage changes from BSBA, not a whole lot of major updates, but you can review all of those. Also, we included in here, you instructed me, yeah, there's a bunch. It's crazy. So what we've done also is you instructed me last time to research the two counties that were mentioned by Y Street last time about the smoking policies. So we did end up calling them, and we found out that Vanessa City is currently just using BSBA smoking policy. They kept it the same. And then Warren County, they worked with Y Street, and they changed a very minor sentence about adding baits, vaping, and smokeless tobacco, and exterior outside of school signage or something. So, and they realized even by doing that, that they stepped away from the BSBA coverage. So in the case like Mr. Groff had said last time, should someone contest something you've done to try to enforce a policy that's not BSBA, you have to represent yourself. Whereas when we adopt BSBA policy as it is, which other schools have been into, you get their coverage. So it's always up to the local school board to, you know, adopt any local policy they see fit, or if you didn't want to make the change officially in policy, you can always look at regulations that may enhance policy.
So we have 30 days to review.
30 days to review, and no action tonight, just to review what the updates are.
And the updates, and so GBC is, is the new version of what we would adopt as a tobacco precinct, which you also have.
Yes.
And it integrates the changes.
The comprehensive...
Yes, yes.
Different from...
BSBA, correct, correct. So you have the whole slew of the comprehensive Y Street recommendations to if you were to go local, but even if you change a small piece of that, then you're, you step away from BSBA's review.
It's the current, it's not in here, I didn't see it, the current BSBA policy. I think it's only the revised.
Yeah, I didn't do the current, but, I mean, that, that's our current, and you're just making the changes.
So the current would be the strike through.
Right, right.
Right, so you'll see the strike...
The ones that you read, the ones that you would read away from, read through.
Yeah.
Right, all interior portions of any building, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, that's all struck in.
That's all scrubbed, so that's whatever it is. Got a line through it.
Got a line through it. So, yeah, so basically, if we adopted these next month, we'd be adopting what's in writing.
Correct. So that's for your review to come to action next month, what you decide to do, and advise us to do. BSBA cannot defend you in the case of the contestation we have. Correct. Depends on the policy of the issue you see arising.
But it all seems, I mean, if you read it, it all seems very reasonable.
It's, yeah.
There's nothing, so the concerns that we...
It's a little outlandish. Trying to police people out of game away, and I can't explain it a little bit.
So that's not in here.
Okay, then we've got rid of that.
We've got rid of that, so that's not in here. So I think what we have to do, we have to read, I think what's happened is we've taken what other district will inherit here, it seems, it seems reasonable.
More, more reasonable.
Right. Things that are enforceable.
So until next month, you have your homework. Go back and tell me if you want to adopt and your policy update.
I'll read them on here. The hard part, as I found out, is trying to remember which one you clicked on, and then go back and say, yes, I did, I clicked on that one already.
Okay, are we okay with that? All right, so speaking of policy, we are going to give you an update on our possible Narcan policy that's been discussed in safety planning and addressing the recent opioid crisis in our areas, in our region, rather. So I've invited the school nurses, who are Torrance and Brittany Holman, my school, to come and give us a little presentation about it. Ladies?
Yes. Thank you for introducing us. We're here tonight to address the board because we would like to... And yet louder at the kids at school. We would like to have Narcan in our school clinics, and we can't just do that without speaking to the board. This is the first step. I'm going to introduce it to you tonight to tell you why, and then we would go further if you decide that that's something you want to pursue. I'd like you to think of it kind of like having EpiPens in the school for kids with food allergies, or, you know, nebulizers for kids, and inhalers for kids with asthma to prevent death. We all know there's an opioid crisis, and who knows if it could happen at our school, but students are dying in other school systems. And the National Association of School Nurses, excuse me, has a statement that they have out that they want schools to be safe and have an effective management plan for an opioid pain reliever-related overdose, and it should be part of the school's emergency plan and preparedness and response plan. Just for some stats, CDC, that's the Centers of Disease Control, in 2010, there were 12 million Americans age 12 and up. That's very sad. That reported using prescription painkillers. In 2013, 2.2 million adolescents ages 12 to 17 were using illicit drugs. As a result, the CDC added OPRs, and that is opioid pain reliever overdose, to their list of the top five health challenges in 2014. So as part of our emergency planning, we can obtain Narcan, which is a nasal injection into the nose, it's not an injection, but you spray it into the nose, if someone we think has had an overdose on school property. This isn't just students, it could be parents, staff, visitors, maybe another school comes to play our school in athletics, football, something like that, and maybe they partied on the way over, and they overdosed and get to us. We want to be prepared to administer that. We as school nurses wouldn't be alone in this, and we can't do anything without policy. So this is our first step, coming to the board and saying, this is what the National Association of School Nurses is recommending to schools, not just us, all over the whole country, that we have a stock of, it's naloxone, it's also called Narcan, in our school clinics. And that's what we're here for tonight. What happens with this drug is if they've gotten into opiates, let's say they injured themselves, kids, anybody, and they get addicted to their pain relievers, that's how this starts. This is why there was an opioid crisis, stuff, prescribing a lot of this many painkillers for these people, and they were getting addicted to it. You don't know that you have that issue until you start taking, and then you find out. It's very expensive to keep that habit going, and you can't just get them unless you go out on the streets. So the alternative is a cheap bit of heroin with some fentanyl in it, and that's what's killing kids. A kid that, at Dora High School, I think this may have happened to him, he was my son's best friend, and a year out of high school, I was told that he had used a drug that had enough fentanyl and fentanyl in it to take down an elephant. Fentanyl is a veterinary medicine that they give to horses, to tranquilizer, crabs, not people, and they're cutting it with heroin now, and that's where the respiratory distress comes from, and it's killing our kids and adults. There was a child, 17, in Pennsylvania, she overdosed at school, she got the heroin from her father. So it's out there, it's an ugly thing, and we don't like to know that it's out there, but it is, and we just want to make sure that our students are safe. I'd like to think that our students don't do any of these things, you know? They really do. We haven't had this issue at our school, but I can tell you, it's happened a lot in Fauquier County. It's very close to us in some of our counties. Our kid and my son played soccer with, two, three weeks ago died from a drug overdose. And these were kids that were good kids, I don't know what happened. I'm thinking that it starts with maybe a broken arm or a broken foot or something from the sports kids, because both the kids I'm talking about are really good soccer players, and one of them had a really bad compound fracture in his senior year of high school, and it was the next year that he overdosed. So it starts that way. There's a real crisis in our country, and if we can save the life of a student in our school by just putting that Narcan in their nose, calling rescue, we're not alone, it's not something I would do myself, we would be calling rescue, and just like any other emergency we have in our school system. To let you know, the resource officers do carry it in their cars. They don't have it in the school building, but they have it in their cars. So we do have access to it if we, if we need it, by having them go out and get it. And then that would be the first responder, and we'd be calling for help. In the school system, in the buildings, Brittany Holman, our high school nurse, and I are first responders. I can run to my clinic, and I can grab it and go. But there are some other specific things that need to be dealt with, with this issue. We have to have a policy in place before we can have it, and we have to have a certified CPR. I've been working with the major, I can't say his last name, what is it?
Arcentino.
Arcentino?
Arnes.
Arnesta? Okay.
We can't say his name.
Okay. He's been coming in and telling me he trains, it's the Revive program, if you've got a copy of the Revive program, I want you, I've given you a copy of this. They teach this. He's an instructor, and he would be willing to train whoever wants to be trained in our school system. We have to have, take in this class and pass it CPR certification and have a policy set before we could obtain the Narcan. So it's a lot to think about, and I would like you to ask some questions, Sergeant. I'm sure you're like, ah, where's this coming from?
Well, also, can I add one thing to this to help guide questions probably, is that in order to establish a recommended policy, even to review, which is what, you know, Mrs. Torrance and this woman are looking for tonight, just to move forward with, with it, they have an established infrastructure to study this through their CHAD committee, which is your...
Right, I would use the CHAD committee for the meeting of parents, staff members, community people, everybody that would be involved. You know, we need to be hearing of everybody.
Absolutely. And that's how we would develop the construct of your, the policy that you would then review and then adopt. So it's a few phases that need to happen first, but tonight, we're looking for whether or not you want us to proceed with the...
If you want to pursue this.
All right, so I've heard all the rumors, so, I mean, to me, there is any question, you would, you would do it. So there, in the back of my mind, there is, it's, what is the, is there any danger involved with this?
No.
I mean, why all the...
The naloxone can't hurt you. If you, if I had a child that's passed out on the floor, and you think, maybe somebody says, oh, I think she did something this morning before she came to school, if you give it and she didn't, it doesn't hurt them.
Okay, so there's, you know, that was my question about...
They use 30 bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, it's just a hard subject.
Well, it's a, it's a hard subject, but it's a real subject.
It's real.
I first asked Dr. Blair about investigating this, I think he talked about it a few, about two months ago, and, and I truly do appreciate all the work we've done to get us to this point, because to me, it's a no-brainer. It's like having, well, like you said, like having an EpiPen for horse allergies, or any kind of EpiNet. You know, we, the deputies have saved two or three lives already this, this calendar year with Narcan. To say that we would never need it would be wonderful, and if we don't ever need it, it probably has a good long shelf life. My question is, who would, who would have it, and where would it be kept? Would the trainer be involved in this training, our athletic trainer? Would be one that I would think would be, along with the school nurses and maybe administrator of the school.
Administrators, we would like that.
Those are the kind of things that I think we need to talk about and discuss about, who would get the trainings, and how many doses, I guess you would say, you would keep on hand.
Right, I think that two doses per school would be a good start, because...
Would that be enough to cover, you were talking about athletics and away teams, and I, see, I was thinking three to five, but that's just...
Well, the thing is, though, the first two would get us until rescue is there, and the disadvantage of our system here is that it's not, you have, the rescue people have to be called in from our homes or wherever they are, so that takes time. Our deputies care, so they would, they're usually at school events, right?
But what I'm saying is that if you had two, the trainer wouldn't have any, and that's at night, you're not here at the mall.
Oh, okay, I see.
You see what I'm saying? There should be in a central location, at the high school at least, to, to have this stuff available.
And once you authorize us to move forward and adopt policy, or those things get...
Yeah, those are the kind of things we need to talk about.
Right, right. And that would, you know, I, I invite all kinds of people to my school pop advisory committee, everybody's invited. I would love to have board members there, too, to ask those questions, so we can work out all these details. There do have, there does have to be keepers of the Narcan, and that's a special name, but I can't find it right now. And we would keep it in the school clinics, so I'm going to say that Brittany and I would be keepers of the Narcan. You know, we're both registered nurses, and so...
Well, you don't have to be a registered nurse.
No, you don't have to be a registered nurse to give it, but to protect it, they would like that.
I mean, the deputies have it.
They have it.
The EMTs have it.
Right. So until they get there, we would at least have doses in our school clinic, and that's what we're coming for you tonight to discuss, that if you could give a consideration, I would like... that if you could give a consideration, I would like to have it. And I think if it ever happens here, and I hope it never does, we would be ready. And then by that time, we would put the emergency response system into effect, and we'd have people coming to help us. And that's why you also have to have CPR training, because they're probably going, it's going to be respiratory arrest. And three to five minutes, you can be right in debt. So it's a quick act, and you've got to get to them and help them. They will respond to Narcan pretty quickly. But then again, it doesn't last that long. That's why you need the two doses until somebody gets there. But we can get as much as we want. I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't know. And to mention also, I have to have a physician write the orders. And I've already talked to Ann Miller and Brooke Miller has the place across the street. She wrote me a prescription. But then when I sat down and saw all the things we had to do at first, I told her just to hang on to it until I got approval, until we knew exactly what we're going to do. But I do have a physician that will write for us. And I would ask them to come to it.
The danger of overuse, huh? I mean, why all the...
Liability, probably liability.
There's something here that we're not seeing.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, because you have to have the clinical check. I mean, it must be, do you overuse it, and then it's not effective? Or why all the...
No, no, the Narcan in itself is not a narcotic or any controlled drug or anything. It's just, one of the things that I was told is that we don't want to broadcast that we have it because the drug dealers are now trying to get hold of Narcan so they can give it to their people. When they sell them the drugs, here's some Narcan so you can come back and get some more later.
Because if the drug dealers get it, then we'll misuse it.
And that was one thing that department helped for us tonight. I've been, I've been talking to people. But there are things, but it's just...
I guess tonight, when we're moving forward, you just need to know the consensus of the board is you have an even I mean, they have an executive felt policy where we're going to track who gets the training. So we know these people were CPR trained, Narcan trained, like it's going to be, like, checked off. We have records of this type. So that's kind of policy has to be drawn up. So I think tonight, we have consensus that you have a going to take instead of not to swear we're at.
Correct.
Right?
When you get a chance to look at your papers, there's some sample things in the paperwork I gave you that I think will help. I have a motion, and I just picked out the ones I thought would be...
More homework.
Well, we actually take a motion on the actual policy.
Yes, this doesn't require an action tonight. This is just to give you an opportunity to think about...
It looks like two years ago, according to whatever year, two years ago, the General Assembly, I mean, they passed legislation about how to handle this and how to protect the people that are using it on other people and that kind of thing. So a lot of thoughts already gone into this legally. I think the risk was low for us, and we received proceedings.
Yes, this is the law. There it is. Okay, the risk. I mean, it's coming, yes. Is there a... Because the only thing I want to mention is that in some schools say that we mainly check with our lawyer and the law. So when other things happen, just to... Yeah.
And we pass a policy.
I think that this takes care of, like, the start of the need and getting it.
I haven't read, but is there a procedure we have to follow to write the policy? Like, can we just put a policy together and use group?
What we're going to do, since we have... We're going to move forward with studying the other like policies, put together the comments and input we have, and then present that to you next time for your review, then, you know, we can put that together. But the procedure is, like she's saying, get various stakeholder input, study the other policies that may be in place, best practice, put it together, and then you...
We can do that, actually. I mean, you could technically put the policy together and put it into the collection of things. So someone would agree to put it back in that policy. That's possible, absolutely possible. The policy should be pretty simple.
Should be, yeah.
It doesn't have to be, you don't have to be impressed with weird.
No, because the major... The major, the major has been wonderful. He's come to symposium, talked twice. He's the trainer for the Revive program. So before you can have news for them, you have to go through the Revive.
Well, I'd love to have this stuff in here before November, right? I'm telling you the truth. I just, you know, every day that you go without something that's going to save a life is a day you're taking it to question. I have to perform after.
See, I told him I had to do this first, so we...
Good, wonderful.
Right. Yeah, so we have to have, yes, the pharmaceutical companies that save death. They are giving it to students. Oh, wow. But you have to go through this, right?
Yep.
They'll get it. So I don't know that it's real expensive, but it's still...
They're worth it.
They're worth it. Yeah.
Thanks for presenting that.
Thank you so much.
Super, you did great.
I saw all those people on the road down there. Don Oliver sent me. That made me so much happier. I was really like...
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, the last item, very quickly, is the Crisis Management Plan. Now, this does fall under Virginia Code 2.23705.2 to keep it confidential even in a public meeting, because it does have our response plans and emergency plans that we can't share. But this does have to be reviewed by the board annually, and we have to provide in the minutes that we provide that for your review. So it is on your executive side, the confidentiality. I say that it's annual review. We look at this plan all the time. And the, our administrative team, every week meets over security procedures and different things, like things I have to do every week and everything. So we do, we do this constantly. And as procedures need to be changed and updated, we make those changes. We had one presented in our administrative meeting this morning about how to respond to an accident we hadn't thought about before. And we updated it, and it's going to be updated in the plan. So we... I'm sorry.
But we forgot to say, everybody turn off their phones.
My baby niece trying to FaceTime me. She gets my, she gets my sister's phone and tries to FaceTime. I'm sorry. She's really cute. But anyway, so Crisis Management Plan, you have that for your review. If you have any particular questions, let us know, and we'll address them. But the board does need to be in there. Yes.
Thanks.
And that concludes the report of this...
All right, moving on, reported headquarters representative?
Yes, thanks to Kevin. Right there. Double dose. Shannon was nice enough to come to the headquarters meeting, and this, we discussed the career coach, pardon Lord Fairfax Community College, and what we should tack that into the next step, which would be a great idea. And she also thanked the headquarters board for its purchase of glasses, a public gift, so that one of our kids had to end up with eye doctors. And they changed the name from the earlier reading program from Care into Wrap Today, Read Tomorrow, so that...
Wrap Tomorrow.
Wrap, Wrap Today, Read Tomorrow, pardon me. And that's when the newborns, you put them before they get to school. That's it. Otherwise, they were very, you wouldn't care for, we would get all our names.
And the taste, what's this about?
Oh, and the taste, I'm sorry, I couldn't go. But I'm hoping they make a million bucks, but I don't think it was quite that much.
Almost, not quite.
It was a crazy blitz. I was fascinated.
That's the first one you've been to?
No, it was second.
It was not second, it was the first one that was.
In the bar.
Fascinating. Everybody had... I've never, I was just fascinated at how generous that you folks were. I was a little blind. I could have probably... It was a wonderful event, it was very well done. Sorry to cut you off. It was a student, a man who's escaped, and spoke. Next step, student.
Passion.
Passion, passion.
Passion.
Great, great October cheer.
She's the first student from Rappahannock to Stanford.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So Miranda said I wrote this. She wrote the letter to Stanford and this girl. And then there's two girls that were in choir. I wrote about saying it was phenomenal. Great, great event. And Kevin was proud of the whole thing. Anyway, it was a great event. And thanks for doing that. All right, it's time for public comment. If you think you'd like to press the board, please, rise.
MBDS didn't need.
State your name and your district.
Skip.
Oh, skip you.
Two in the...
Yeah, good.
Now, we meet on the twenty first.
This proceeds, sorry.
Hi, I'm Rich Hogan. I'm a teacher up here at the high school, getting into my thirteenth year in high school, career in tech. Just wanted to give you some good news. Mr. Mills knows, and so does Larry. I like to show up occasionally and guess something good to talk about. And boy, I support the bike path because I had my mountain bike club, and we did behind here and around. It was always tough to, how do we go back? And I've taken sports teams to come up here to the high school to watch, maybe a JV wants to watch the RC, but we're practicing before, same thing, so anyway. That's great. And I'm the person that actually has ridden home from high school when I got hit by a car in Amesville.
I'm making this story and putting it in the application.
Anyway, career in tech. Years ago, Shannon in her other hat, when she was our career in tech advisor, we went with Mike Tupper to Lord Fairfax preliminary meetings. I'm excited to tell you now that we've implemented some of those programs. Took how many years, Shannon? And it was, you know, part of our workforce solutions. And I came back to report to Shannon that one of the classes I teach is welding. So now I'm a certified dual enrollment instructor through Lord Fairfax. And the exciting thing is, is the kids can take the class now that at that, at that point, we thought we were going to have to send them off campus. So, but the best part of this story is I was relating Shannon, and I had actually planned on coming and reporting the good news anyway. So through the process, we started this, we started the school year, and I'm really apprehensive, like, great, I'm a, you can call me professor now, tell them this is... But we had, I had no idea how this was going to work. We didn't have the paperwork together. We're all like scrambling. Sally Shackleford is doing dual enrollment. Sheila Land's doing dual enrollment. Scott Sloss is doing dual enrollment through Workforce Solutions in the evening. And then I'm doing this during the day. So we all had our hoops we had to jump through. Anyway, long story short, it all came together thanks to Shannon, and particularly Danny Pond. Danny Pond got us together. So I took my students that were interested. In the county, your part, you all were paying ninety percent of these kids tuition. They're only paying fifty-six dollars, which is a great deal. Roughly, you know, four hundred and thirty-six dollar program anyway. But in the process, they had to take a placement test. And the excitement I saw in one young man's face when he came back and said, Hogan, I'm college material. To me, that whole, that whole, if it wasn't for that dual enrollment in welding, he never would have taken that placement test. And we all know the two-year programs at Lord Fairfax are such success. We're in career in tech. I'm a college graduate who never really got to use his college degree until I turned it over in education. So, you know, we're pushing these kids. Career in tech's big now. But it was great to see this young man and others. They never would have taken that placement test if it hadn't been for that program. So just wanted to report that that, we're excited about that. It's all new, new to me, new to Mr. Slosser too. Sheila Land's been doing it, and new to Sally. And I tell you what, Sally, she is, as Miss Gall used to say, bell to bell. You walk by her class, and she is, she is on those eighth graders right to the last minute. So anyway, just wanted to say that. I'm going to, I'm going to get home and get to my sport path practice. Sorry, me and Larry are all in our t-shirts, but that's who it is.
Thanks for stopping by.
I'm on, I'm on call tonight, that's five in my t-shirt. I'm mainly driver on this end of the county.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Hi, everybody. I'm Steph Litter, and I'm here to just urge you to support the Multi-Gis Trail. When my kids were young, I took them biking on the roads in Rappahannock. And you can believe they don't bike anymore. It was really dangerous. And this, I just think it's an opportunity for so many people, and especially for kids. You know, we don't have that many things that they can do after school. Maybe they can ride between the two schools. Anyway, I hope you'll support the proposal. I wish you all, and Shannon, you know, great, congratulations. It's wonderful to be here.
I'll pledge, I'll pledge a bike, first bike rap for the high school. By the first bike rap, we keep to ride your bikes.
Hey, imagine, imagine them getting old and be able to tell a story of the...
Yeah, it's true.
We had the bike.
My name is Lenny Janot, and I am a little bit embarrassed to admit, I don't know what district. Are you my district, Larry? In Woodville?
Woodville.
So...
Still more Hawthorne.
Okay, still more Hawthorne, I'm sorry.
I'll just leave it that. Probably haven't changed yet.
It's my, it's my ninth year here in the system. But my first time at school, we're meeting also a little bit embarrassed to admit. But I'm here to give you some accolades to say thank you very much, but also for a little bit of a concern I have. I appreciate the attention you guys have paid to this safety and the safety concerns that we've had raised in the past year and how the measures you guys have put in place. And Dr. Blair, was that who? That I went to his meeting also. And I appreciate it. I know you guys want to walk a very fine line between trying to keep our schools safe and also keeping our schools welcoming. And I was a little bit concerned. I have an eighth, a sixth, and a fourth grader right now, and then I also have a kindergartner. And as of the sixth, eighth, sixth, and fourth grades, I was always allowed to walk my kindergartner in for the first day, just give him a kiss and say goodbye. So I was kind of abruptly taken aback that first day when I came. And there were a bunch of teachers standing up front, and mostly teachers I know, because like I said, I've been here for years. And they quickly stopped me and said, no, you can't come in. And I said, what? We get a walk-in, they said, nope, you have to leave it right here. And I was just a little bit, I just want to make sure you guys realize how it is to those of us that don't have a badge on the outside. I love the schools. I love being here. I love being, coming in and being welcomed to them. And so sometimes you want to make sure that some of the new measures, I don't mind the buzzing in, I don't mind putting my badge, you know, ID card and all. The one-way mirror kind of gets to me every time in the school where they slide it shut. Don't really, I pick my kindergartner up every day. But, so I just want to make sure there's a warm welcome. I felt that there wasn't at that time, and especially with someone who's been here for nine years, to someone that might be new to the system. You've got to make sure you somehow get that friendliness and the warmth in there too. And Mr. Temple and I had a nice conversation. Another thing came up just a couple of weeks later that I really wanted to go to Eclipse with my kids because that's something that seems like a once-in-a-lifetime event. I was excited for it. I left, wrote notes to two of the teachers. Didn't nearly hear back from me. The one at the step of the kindergarten one, this is, sure, yeah, having fun, just verbally. And then, I'm not sure about the robocalls. I think we've talked about that in the past. But I made a recording of it. but I even made a recording of it, I don't think you guys want to hear it, but all the robocalls, when they come to our house, if you don't pick up that phone immediately, the first sentence or two are cut off. So today's one, I got one today that, that told about incident today, that I heard the whole thing, so I picked it up, but yesterday's one, it, it picks up, and right when it picks up, it says, there's been, um, the sheriff were involved, nothing, no reports or no weapons were, were brandished at any time, and I'm going, what is going on? I mean, I'm, I'm pretty down to earth, but I, it just, I don't know what's up with the robocalls, but they don't seem to work if you hit an answer machine. Anyways, back to the Eclipse, but, um, I talked to the teachers, and then I thought I was on board to go, and then that morning, I was, my husband says he received a robocall on Friday night, so I kind of sent a feeler out, took a couple friends, saying, did you all get this robocall, inviting you not to come to the Eclipse, because I guess we didn't want to be overrun with, with parents, and, and all my, all my friends had said, no, we didn't hear anything about that. So I got a robocall to my house, which kind of came, rubbed off wrong to me, it seemed like it was just our house, or just to us. After I talked to ten or fifteen parents, nobody else had heard of it. Anyways, but that, that morning came up, and I got a call from my kindergarten teacher saying, we, the, the teachers have gotten an email that says, no, no visitors are allowed that day. But the, the parents weren't told that. So I talked to Mr. Temple, and he quickly explained that, you know, they don't want to be overrun by parents, especially when everybody's outside, totally makes sense, but I would hope that, and he invited me to come, he said, you know, you're well-known in the school, that's fine, if you want to come, and I appreciated that, but I want to make sure, if you need a committee or something like that, or some liaison in some way, that parents are still invited to come and support their kids in the school, especially with, with the little kids, and just being in there, I feel like you get a, a parent in to walk those hallways, and all of a sudden, they're heavily involved, and they go, oh, I want to be there. And unfortunately, it's funny, Mr. Temple, I know he's new here, and, but he has plenty of experience, but he said something about, we can't have five, six hundred kids, or parents showing up to wash the clips, and I wanted to laugh, I'm thinking, that, wouldn't that be awesome if they were all willing to come? But, so, anyways, I appreciate what you guys are doing, I love some of the measures in place, but I wanted to just make sure that you guys hear from a parent publicly, that, make sure it keeps staying warm and welcoming, too.
Thanks. Good information, appreciate that. Anybody else? Yes, go.
I'm Kevin Brings, I'm Lakefield District, I'm also the pre-caret headwaters. Um, first of all, I would, I need to step out of the headwaters director and come to view of the parent. Um, the incident they're talking about, I was probably a little closer to that than some other people, and some things happened that probably could have been done better, or done in a different way, but I'm not here to point fingers at anybody, I'm actually here to, to praise people, because when you do something wrong, sometimes the harsh thing is to say, you know what, I made a mistake. Come clean with it, and say, we did the best we can, and I thought that the school did do that, in this case. And the second thing is, is a, a, um, request to my fellow citizens as well, to realize that asking school staff or whatever to be perfect is asking the wrong thing, asking them to be professional is the right thing. And what's professional is to admit that you've made a mistake, try to find a way to fix the mistake, and try to communicate as best you can, and I feel that the school does that, in every way possible. So I want to give accolades to the school, to, uh, Mrs. Grimsley, to Mr. Temple, to all the people involved in it, for doing the best they could under circumstances that really were very difficult. So, um, that's, I just needed to, to put that out there, and to give your great accolades to both these two folks and their staff, for doing the best they could, because unfortunately, not every situation is written in the book. Sometimes you gotta improvise, sometimes you gotta do things the best you can, and sometimes you're gonna make a mistake, that's just natural, the law of human. But when you're trying to do the best you can, and do it, and, and to have the child's, and the children's best interest at heart, that's what it's all about. So thank you very much for everything that you folks do. Now, a more positive, happy thing, um, and you may want to get comfortable on this, 'cause this could take me far. Um, I want to thank everybody involved in the school who really helped out, uh, this last weekend at the Chase Racing Hall. Um, thank you very much. First of all, you cannot have this kind of support if you don't have that support from the top, so thank you, Mrs. Grimsley, for everything you did, helping make that happen, and, and being the one who said that the best way to lead is to also serve, and by making sure that you're a part of that, thank you so much for doing that. And for, uh, members of the, of the staff, including the chief temple knows how, um, helping with that, teachers who have served food, band students, again, who help with parking, National Arts Society, and chris ball team, for, uh, chris ball coast for serving, uh, culinary students for making, like, some of the best food you could ever have, and, um, and, uh, people just presenting it in a way that you, that you'd have to go to some of the best restaurants in the world to see that kind of service, and they're just wonderful, for these students. Um, member of the staff and the board here who attended the event, was wonderful having you there, and we want to see, you know, some of the things that, that we do for the taste. And, uh, thanking Mr. Slosser, um, and other folks who have, who made things for our talent auction, uh, they're always very well received, and it's wonderful for our guests to see the great things that we do here in this, in this district. So that's, those, those images are the most special, I think, for me, seeing how great our students are, and how good our teachers are, and teaching them how to make great stuff like that. Um, and I would be totally remiss if I did not give, uh, a shout out to Kirsten Belaluka and Sofia Hernandez, she was wonderful, uh, singing that they did, uh, they each did a solo, and they did duet together, and it was absolutely fabulous, and it got to show, uh, folks, uh, of our guests, just how tremendously talented the students are in Redmond, here. Um, I got a chance to see it firsthand during our summer course over the summer, and, um, while we have great directors, that doesn't mean anything, we don't have students who are talented and very dedicated, and, but these young ladies were, they really showed how wonderful we, uh, we, you know, students are in this, in the county and the district, so, thank you very much, everyone.
Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Rachel Lyne from the Piedmont District, and, um, and again, I'm gonna share just a reaction that I had to the Narcan presentation, um, a story, a personal story that shocked me. Um, my son had a compound fracture when he was in fifth grade, actually while he was enrolled in the DARE program, which we all approve every year. Um, he had to have surgery, um, he's a, you know, he was eleven, going on twelve, I just signed every form, as of, you know, any panicked parent would, filled the prescription, as any panicked parent would, trusted the doctors, the authorities. And, um, it was, it was strange, because I witnessed my excellent, wonderful son craving that medicine. I mean, he's, we do not, you know, we don't, we're not, we don't, you know, he hasn't, and he's never experienced anybody being on any kind of drugs in his life, you know, thankfully. But I was shocked, when he was a rising sixth grader, he had to have a second surgery the first day of school, and again, I went to Children's Hospital at UVA, we, he's a small kid, but he was treated as a twelve-year-old. He, again, was craving those painkillers, and I finally called the nurse twenty-four hours later, he was given a dose that was one and a half times what a child his size should have had. At that point, I mean, I asked him, do you real, do you realize that the feeling you're having is a feeling of starting to become addicted to a substance? And I was mean, I was like, we're only taking Tylenol from now on, I don't like seeing you having this up and down thing. So, I mean, this is not the others, this is not, I mean, it was one of the worst things I've ever experienced, it was worse than seeing his arm broken. And so I just really hope that as we're evaluating what we're teaching our children, our students, I mean, he graduated the DARE program, he had no idea that the first person to ever offer him a drug would be his mom, because I was, I filled a prescription that the doctor at Children's Hospital, you know, good, wonderful hospital, I don't, you know, it was just an intern at a hospital filling out a, so, so it's a real, you know, I'm glad that you're rushing to have that, it's also an education thing to where our fifth graders who might break their arm roller skating, you know, it happens to everybody, it's life, should know that, and I don't know if that's part of the DARE program, but it wasn't part that my son heard from the DARE program, and at this day and age, we should make sure that's updated. So, that's my story, and I hope it can help, as Henry's story could help other kids, but it's important, we may tell this, at this meeting, so, thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to, uh, action items, we have a, uh, chance to read the resolution. So entertain a motion concerning the adoption of this resolution, see if it's a motion. A motion, Mr. Grims, or second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Johnson, concerning discussion. All in favor of, like I'm saying, I?
I.
This has room, uh, for every one of us to sign separately, so I'll pass this round and want to get this room and signature. Did I say it? Good. Okay, moving on to, uh, new business, uh, is there any new business? I just had one thing. So if we're gonna change our meeting time, now's the time to discuss our meeting time. So, if we're going to, uh, so, we start at six o'clock, and just go straight into open session, stay that way, and do closed session at the end? Is that a good plan?
I, well, you know how I, I'll, I'll say it anyway, I, I think six o'clock is too early. I, I don't believe that everybody can get here at six o'clock, uh, people getting off work and those types of things. So, I would propose six thirty, and then move on. If we did that, we'd be done at eight forty.
Six thirty? Whenever we advertise, we just, just to make sure that we're gonna be advertising.
We're doing six thirty and closed at the end.
At the end.
The only thing that makes sense.
So we open, we're, we're going to op, we will go in to open session at six thirty P M, starting October the tenth, twenty seventeen, and we'll do it that way until we change. Closed session, closed session will happen at the end. And just be aware that the closed session at the end, there will be motions that, once we come out of closed session, may have to occur, uh, before adjournment and after certification, right? Which is historically how we did things, by the way, but there were some, some people that were upset, because they had to wait a couple hours for us to come out of closed, we were tums, I mean, hey, that's so wait, and, uh, I wanted to hear what the motions were coming out of personnel. We're gonna do, all the other motions that we typically do, related business will still happen, at the normal place, action items, but having public comment, except for personnel. All right? So, uh, our next regular meeting will be October the tenth, at six thirty P M, sharp, closed session to follow. Anything else? Is there a motion adjourned?
Certainly.
We have a motion, Ms. Johnson, second, Ms. Grove, all in favor, I? Thanks for coming.